On page two, go through. Does that, does anybody object to that?
Nope.
Is it okay? All right, so the first issue to discuss is, as we move forward with the 12th resolution, what would the duration be? What I would recommend is that whatever changes we adopt today, we handle them similarly to how we have handled our resolution in the past, in that it is in place until the board determines that it should be reversed or changed. And I would recommend that we analyze this at every board meeting. So every two weeks, we would reconsider all of these issues. You know, I've watched as other towns, I was told, I talked to mayors in different towns yesterday to see what their thoughts were, and Starkville, Hattiesburg, Tupelo, West Point, and Columbus, as of last night, had extended their mask mandates indoors. And had a variety of different ways of reviewing that, you know, some doing it through October, whatever, some until November. I say we do it as long as our healthcare professionals tell us all of these different things are necessary. So whatever you decide is necessary, I would recommend that the duration is what it has been, which has been until the board decides otherwise.
Correct.
Agreed.
Do y'all agree with that? All right. The next issue, is that okay with you, Keisha?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah.
All right. Group gatherings. You will note that the governor's order for group gatherings allows activities to be limited to groups of no more than 20 people in a single indoor space, or groups of no more than 100 in an outdoor space, where individuals not in the same household or in close proximity, or less than six feet to each other. Right now, as our ordinance stands, we are at, we did not differentiate between whether people could social distance or not. Our ordinance, or our resolution currently reads that we allow 10 indoor and 25 outdoor. So I'll look for feedback from you all on how you want to proceed.
Mayor, I think the 10 indoor and the 25 outdoor are a good number right now. We're a different town than others in the state. We deal with a lot of people that come in and, even when this is in place, we're seeing group gatherings that are larger than 10. And you have citizens that are concerned about that. I'm concerned about it. So I would make a motion that we keep it at 10 indoor and 25 outdoor.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Does any other board member have a different number in mind?
Mayor, if you have any findings, if that's a motion where you've been told that masks are particularly important because of the makeup of the city, then I think it's appropriate before this motion is adopted to make sure those are included.
Well, I have some information on masks, but we're only talking about group gatherings currently. I mean, the, most of the comments that we have gotten from healthcare professionals for the past several weeks have been that as they do their contact tracing and as they see different people, that they have been told that most of the contacts have been made in small to large social gatherings, from weddings to funerals, birthday parties, baby showers, that kind of thing is where we have been told the majority of the spread is coming from. And Dr. Burks, when she was here a few weeks ago, who's the White House Coronavirus Task Force member, stated that as well, that her belief was that most of the spread we are seeing in our 18 to 24-year-old age group particularly comes from social gatherings. So that is, that is correct. All right, so we have a motion and a second to leave the group gathering numbers as they currently are. Mark or Keisha, did y'all have any input there?
I agree.
Okay, it looks like John Morgan is now. Michael, can you put him in? All right. Hey, John?
Hi.
Um, we are just discussing the group gatherings. And as you know, the governor's executive order changed that from 20 people indoors and 100, and 100 people outdoors. Our resolution still reflects 10 indoors and 24 outdoors. I have a motion from Bailey and a second from Addy to leave those numbers as they are at 10 and 25. Do you have any questions or concerns before we vote on that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of leaving those numbers at 10 and 25?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next on the governor's executive order is face coverings. You will see in letter D where he says face coverings, all of that section, I did clarify this with his legal counsel yesterday afternoon, all of section D pertains to schools. And so all of the different exceptions that are given for face coverings and what have you, all of those pertain to schools. And masks are required for all public indoor spaces per our current order, and that is what the governor is requiring for the schools. So I'm assuming there are no changes there, as that would be really considered by our school board. All right. The next is our business operations. We are currently at 50% capacity, and the governor's new order raises that to 75% capacity of the business's capacity, provided a minimum of six feet of social distancing. Are you all comfortable with moving to that 75% capacity? We did move to 75% capacity in our restaurants at our last meeting, per the governor's update, and now he is recommending 75% in businesses. So give me feedback on where you all want to go from there.
I'm comfortable with the 75% if our mask ordinance stays in place.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Preston? Mark, John, Keisha, any input there on?
I agree.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I agree.
All right. So is there a motion then to allow customers and visitors in the business, no more at one time than 75% of the business's capacity?
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move to our restaurants and bars. We are, we're currently at 75% capacity per the governor's last order. That remains the same. We are at six customers per table, whereas the governor's specifies party maximum of 10 persons per table. And we are currently at a closing time of 10:00 PM, except for home game Fridays and Saturdays. The governor's order specifies 11 o'clock every night. So the, the two changes would be, as, since we already match at capacity, would be 6 versus 10 per table and 10:00 PM versus 11:00 PM closing time.
Do you want to break those into two, or do you want it all as?
How, that's up to y'all. Y'all, y'all go forward with that.
Uh, Mayor, uh, I'll make a motion that we go to 11 o'clock and also have, allow 10 people per table. But I would also like to include in that motion, and I don't know if it's an ordinance change or not, but that we go to 11 o'clock on Sunday nights, um, at least, at least through football season while, while we're doing this, and we can look at it after that. And the people who have come to me and talked about this are local people, not students. I don't even think Sunday night is a big night for students. But anyway, they're getting run out of places at halftime, so I want to make that motion.
I, I don't know, Pope will have to advise us on that, John. As our closing time on Sundays has been 9:00 PM, um, per our alcohol ordinance for a long time, and so it has remained 9:00 PM Sundays. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that can be changed due to an emergency order. I hear what you're saying, and I have the same concerns, but... Yeah. But you can bring that up as a substantive change at our next board meeting, but I don't think that's part of the emergency order.
Okay, good deal, thanks. But I still, I still make the motion.
Okay, so your motion is that we follow, follow the governor's order to go from 6 per table to 10, and go from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM Monday through Saturday? Yes?
Correct, I'll second that mo, I'll second that motion. My, my only comment on that is that we need to make sure that we have that six feet of separation as people are seated, but I'll support the 10 per table.
Right, I won't, Mr. Taylor had something to say.
Yes, I would, I would just think we should remain as if, because we are not, you know, going down in pace that far out. And so right now, I think everything's pretty good as if.
Okay. One thing...
I have, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Keisha.
I'm okay with, um, during the week, uh, going back to closing at 11, but I would hope we would stay at 6 per table.
Okay.
But I'm fine with the 11 o'clock, but I wish we could stay at 6.
All right, let me say that the governor's ordinance also, just for anyone watching, is also requiring the things that we have provide, provided in our resolution prior, which is patrons at tables, one patron to another patron group must still be six feet apart, and also must be seated at a table for service of alcohol. So there's still, that's still contained in the governor's latest order. So we have a motion and a second for 10 per table and closing time Monday through Saturday at 11:00 PM. Motion by John Morgan and a second by Mark Holsey. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on that motion and then proceed from there. Right, so again, the motion is to go to 10 per table and 11:00 PM closing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, I am going to be the tiebreaker there, and I'm going to vote for us to go to 10 per table and 11:00 PM. All right. Next, we have reception halls and conference centers. Except as otherwise provided herein, the number of guests in the reception hall or conference center shall be no greater than 50% of the maximum capacity. We are currently at 25%. So the governor's order takes that to 50% in our reception halls and conference centers. Is there any discussion there? Oh, well, and also it says for seated dinners in those reception halls or conference centers, it is the same consideration where it can move up from 6 per table to 10 guests per table if it's a seated dinner.
It's 75% maximum.
75% when they're seated at tables. Yes, you're correct, I'm sorry.
I'm good with going to the 50% reception halls and conferences. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Well, does that include to change the number of people per table?
Yes.
All right, so then we would be following the governor's order for reception halls and conference centers. Anyone on the phone have a comment or question regarding?
No.
All right, so we have a motion to follow the governor's order there and increase capacity to 50%, maximum seating capacity for conference centers. If they are seated for dinners, it's 75% and can have 10 guests per table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next we have is auditoriums and movie theaters. Currently, our ordinance allows for 25% of seating capacity indoors and 50% at outdoor screening areas. The governor's new order says that there's a 50% of maximum seating capacity for both indoor or outdoor. So what is, how do y'all want to proceed there?
I'm good with the 50% as long as they can hold that minimum of six feet social distancing.
I am too, second.
All right, anybody else have a comment? Okay. So Mr. Taylor is okay with the 50% outdoors, but he would like to stay at the 25% indoors. Anyone on the phone have a comment? All right, so we have a motion and a second to move to 50% maximum seating capacity at auditoriums and movie theaters. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Okay, the motion passes. Next, we have close contact and personal care services. We are currently at one client per stylist, and no one can wait in the waiting room. They must wait in their cars or outdoors. That is one thing that is included in ours that the governor does not include in his latest executive order. He does include face coverings for both the person getting their haircut and for the, the customer and the employee. And he has the other safety measures in place, but one that is included in ours that would need to change if we were to go strictly by his, is he does not limit it to one client per stylist and no one in the waiting room. So what are your feelings there?
So your major is the waiting room. I mean, that's, that's, that's the split. I'm good where we're at.
I am too.
Make that motion.
Okay, one thing I want to point out to you is, before you move forward, he, they do say that in, in a waiting area, that there's a minimum of six feet separation between persons. That's number four Roman numeral under there, if that matters to you. It may not, I'm not trying to talk you into it, I'm just pointing that out.
Sorry, I missed that. I will rescind my motion. And I've got a second, so I have to wait for that one.
Okay.
I'm gonna back up and get to the six feet of separation. I'll go with it.
Reverse your second?
Now make a motion to follow the governor's orders.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to follow the governor's orders for close contact and personal care services. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, Jason, will you take the next one?
This is, this is not, yeah, it's not open. It's not open.
Thank you.
All right, um...
Outdoor sports.
Outdoor sports. Think, uh, per our emergency resolution, masks are required for outdoor sports. OPC will not open the youth activities until at least two weeks after the end school starts. Coach Howl Activity Center walking track will be open by resolution only and limited to 10 people at one time. Coach Howl Activity Center pickleball courts will be, uh, open by reservation only and limited to eight people at a time at M Trade and OPC facilities. Every other field must be closed. At M Trade Park, masks are required inside the complex, except when players and coaches are on the field for tournaments and games, and...
Thank you. No, you can keep going, thank you, I'm thinking, I'm coughing.
You go ahead.
That, that, those would be the changes. Those are the things that are in place right now for us. You know, the governor's order removes the mask mandate, both indoors and outdoors, with the exception of schools, um, close contact services and employees of restaurants. And so as it currently stands, this board had included in a previous resolution that at M Trade Park, masks were required inside the complex. So, um, you will need to determine if masks will continue to be mandated in outdoor settings, if you are okay with removing that at M Trade Park, and if you would like the, um, you know, if you would like the following things to still be covered. Seth is not here. Seth is here. Seth, can you give us a quick update on how that's working as far as 10 people at a time on the walking track and the pickleball and?
Yeah, um, so, because they, they people in Iowa, as we had known, we have not filled up a single hour in the month that we've been open. Um, there's always been space for somebody on either one. Um, we're averaging about 120 people a week, and that's total altogether. So, I mean, we're not, we're not anywhere close to filling the numbers that we have right now. But we're running people out every 45 minutes, so the pickleball numbers are not necessarily staying up, because I don't want to come in at 45 minutes.
Right.
Seth, I got a, I had a question, because somebody asked me about basketball season and if we're going to be able to do that. If, if we are planning that, though, I would think one of the requirements, if we had fans, would be masks inside.
If, I mean, y'all make rules, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna follow y'all's, uh, what y'all, y'all's direction, y'all want to go in. Um, right now, we have, we have not gotten into a situation where we're going to allow registration, because I don't know, um, really what we're gonna do. Um, if we do, we've already talked about, we're not gonna start the season in for January to push everything back. So, um, flag football is coming in, we're doing a shortened, condensed flag football season that'll be up straight outdoors, but, um, that, the point right now would be, would be into January, what we do.
Okay, yeah, I just had a question.
So, so Seth, would you recommend that we, we've already passed the point of starting activities two weeks after school? Would you suggest that we keep the mandate that only 10 people at one time on the track? Or do you wish us to raise that and pickleball, eight people at a time? Are you good, are those numbers, you said you didn't fill up with those numbers, so...
We have filled those numbers up now. The only continuous complaint that we get, or question that we get, um, are the walkers on the track are still required to wear a mask, but the pickleball players are not. So if anything's gonna be considered, I would, that would be the only thing that I would ask, that, that, when you were actively walking on the track, um, which is the public...
Well, I don't know that we, I don't think we specified that you had to wear one while you're on the track, but not when you're playing pickleball?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
There's, yeah, and I also had a question. I, I've had several pickleball players, they're like, okay, 45 minutes doesn't give us time. Get going, get set up, get going. I'd also look at, I don't know what that time needs to be.
Yeah, well, while we've started allowing them to do, since, since the, uh, since it's not filling up every hour when people are not coming in, we are telling pickleball people to sit back, sit back, and then come back through. So we're allowing them to come back in now and continue to play, and I think even this week, we've not even required them to go out. We've let them stay there so we wouldn't, uh, wouldn't have to disrupt activities.
It just seems it might be an easier fix, and you might get more participants if we went ahead and set it to a pickleball, whatever the time standard is there, I, I don't know what that is.
It's true, every hour is whatever, when they come in and play. But you know, we're limited at court, so if we have, we have typically 40 pickleball players, and we start doing that, we're gonna live it out.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to double it or not.
Yeah, then we will leave this in place. Um, and so the, the questions become, and, and we can have the mask discussion now as far as indoor and outdoor, because it will apply to the rest of this. But thank you, Seth. If you, you got something else to add? Go ahead.
As y'all were talking about masks at M Trade Park and outdoor venues, if you would also consider the tennis courts to be an outdoor venue as well, and whatever y'all decide on what, we follow that, I would like that.
All right, and, and another outdoor venue, didn't we at our last, um, we had a lot of conversation about this, and I've not looked it up, but we're getting a lot of questions from folks watching the meeting. Um, didn't we open the playgrounds at our last meeting? But we said, no, yeah, that's what I thought. There, there is no, um, you should go knowing that they are not being cleaned on a regular basis. The rain cleans them, and that is the way that, they have always been maintained. And so we, uh, we did open the playground, someone...
Except for Avent Park. We left Avent Park closed just because it's all wood, and there's so many small spaces there, you cannot...
Okay, Avent Park is what they're asking about. I didn't recall that we didn't. Okay, so do you all still feel that Avent Park should remain, playground should remain closed, or do you feel differently about that at this time?
It's a different surface than the rest of the parks in my mind, if I remember correctly. I mean, the rest of the parks are plastic and metal. This is all wood.
Okay. Up to y'all. We're just getting that question, so I wanted to address it for the public, so... Okay, so you all want that to stay, all parks are open except for Avent Park? Anybody on the phone feel different?
I agree.
Okay, then let's move to, we can make the mask, um, decision now as we consider outdoor and indoors. Um, as you all know, as I said a minute ago, the governor's latest executive order only mandates masks be worn in schools, and he has a list of exceptions within the school, by employees in restaurants and bars, and by people in close contact personal services like tattoo parlors and hair salons and that kind of thing. Um, I reached out to Dr. Dobbs yesterday evening, as well as three of our local physicians who we have relied on for information throughout this pandemic. And so I just want to share with you all some of their comments. Um, I, I reached out to Dr. Dobbs and said, I, I understand that the governor has removed the mandate, although he is still requesting and suggesting that people wear masks in indoor and outdoor spaces. But that mandate is no longer in place. I said, based on us being a university town, knowing the tourism that we have here and those kinds of things, what would your recommendation be to our board? And he sent me this statement. He said, "It's hard to overstate the benefits of wearing a mask in public, especially for a college town like Oxford where so many visitors come and go. Adding to this risk, college students are at especially high risk for COVID. As the pandemic has evolved, we have learned what a valuable tool masking can be. Masks protect the wearer and prevent outbreaks. Given the uniquely high risk of transmission in Oxford, it makes sense for you to maintain a local mask mandate." Um, and so that is from Thomas Dobbs, who's the director of the Mississippi Department of Health. Also reached out to the three doctors, um, who we have relied on since March and have been so generous with their time and their expertise to come and visit with us as we've had questions. Eric Dahl said, and Eric Dahl has been here and spoken at our meetings, Dr. Dahl, "With increased spread of the virus, likely coronavirus tends to spread better in fall and winter. It would be imprudent to let go of indoor protection. I know it's tough to make that call with the caseload decreasing overall in the state, but I'd sure hate to see that ordinance disappear now." Spoke with Dr. Jeff Dennis, and he said, "We've accomplished a lot. The masks allow us to sustain a functional economy safely. We've made, we have many positive, we've, sorry, we have made positive progress, and we should continue to maintain what we are doing, especially considering the upcoming flu season. It's critical that we maintain our economy, and the masks allow us to do just that." Jason Waller, who is the, um, Director of Emergency Services at Baptist Memorial Hospital, said, "With flu season coming up, it is important that we continue to mandate masks inside." He encouraged everyone to get a flu shot, and he stated that the masks are critical, critical for us to keep in place. So our state health officer and local healthcare professionals all recommend keeping the mask mandate indoors in place at the current time. That's with the information that's before us today. As we've made decisions going along, um, for the past six months, we made the best decision that we can make with the information in front of us that given day. Data has shown that the masks work in curbing the spread. I shared with you all Dr. Burke's remarks about how the plan on paper looked great in theory, but now that you see it play out, you know that there are three things, that there is strict data that show they make a difference, and that's social distancing, face coverings, and washing your hands frequently. And in a community with visitors coming in every weekend with a large population of 18 to 24-year-olds, where we are seeing the highest increase in spread across the nation, it seems the best way to keep our businesses open. I have personally received 69 emails in the past 24 hours in favor of continuing the mask mandate, and I've not received one email for removing the mandate. On social media, as of a few hours ago, I'd received 63 comments for continuing the mandate and 31 against. Just to give you all an idea of what the feedback has been on our social media. And I know because many of you have forwarded me additional emails, that you all have gotten, um, different emails even than those. I believe that these masks are critical for us indoors, and that the majority of our citizens feel more comfortable going into businesses and continuing to, um, keep our economy going strong if masks are present. So I will turn that over to you all for discussion on whether or not I think we have to look at them, you know, as indoor, outdoor, and then what, what do you all, um, based on this information? Yes, sir?
Anything masks, as if, because of our college community, and so we want to...
All righty.
Mayor, I, whether we like them or not, I think the masks are an economic driver for us right now. Meaning that if we want our businesses to continue and our citizens to be able to go and shop in a safe way, I think we need them indoor mask requirements for now.
And I think that helps your businesses, your business workers, your, your employees in these businesses at the same time. They've got multiple people coming in from out of state and out of the district, and I'm good with masks in businesses.
All right, anybody on the phone have a comment?
I'm, I'm good with those in the businesses. Uh, I'm good with relaxing it outdoors, except when you're waiting in a line for a restaurant or concession stand where social distancing can't be controlled.
Okay, I want to be sure that, that we understand what you're saying there. So you're saying you are for masks, the mask mandate being continued indoors in businesses, and you are okay with it being, um, removed outdoors with one exception, you must wear a mask if you're in line. Tell me where you said, Mark?
In a matter that doesn't allow social distancing.
In a matter that doesn't allow social distancing. And you said concession stands?
Concession stand or waiting in line for a restaurant or bar.
Okay. All right, Keisha?
Hello, Keegan. I agree. I, I'm okay with, I know I want the indoor to stay, but I'm okay with outside only if you can't social distance in line waiting to get into a restaurant or bar.
All right, John? You there, John?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say John. Yeah, I'm good with that also. I like what Mark said. I'm fine with that.
Okay, then we will need a motion to that effect from someone?
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, Preston just made a motion. Okay, then, are you, is your motion that we keep it like it is or that we remove the mandate outdoors like Mark said? Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Mr. Taylor to leave our mask mandate as it is, which would mean indoors and outdoors in public spaces. Is there a second? All right, then that motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an additional motion or more discussion?
I would like to make a motion as I described, keeping indoors, removing outdoors, except when waiting in a queue line for restaurant, bar, concession stand where social distance cannot be controlled.
One second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So that would be masks indoors in all businesses and public buildings. Outdoors, masks are not required, except when you are in a situation where social distancing is not possible, such as a line for a concession stand or a line waiting outside a restaurant and bar. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right, the motion passes. All right, so that leaves us with our, let's go back to the outdoor sports complex and multi-field complex. That removes the requirement for masks inside M Trade Park, except when people are standing in line perhaps to get in or at a concession stand. So our mask discussion already will cancel that out. Is there anything else to be changed under outdoor sports complexes or multi-field complexes? All right, the rest of the order deals with college and university outdoor stadiums. And I believe that that is it for things that are covered in our serving Oxford safely. So as a summary for those watching, the board has decided that this current twelfth resolution that we are about to adopt would stay in effect until the board rescinded, modified or extended it. That group gatherings will remain at ten indoor and twenty-five outdoor. That businesses may now have no greater than seventy-five percent of the business's capacity, provided a minimum of six feet of social distancing in businesses, voting precincts, not voting precincts, I'm sorry. It does not apply to religious entities, voting precincts, students in classrooms or gatherings governed by other capacity limitations. Restaurants will remain at seventy-five percent capacity, but will be allowed to have ten per table, a closing time of eleven P.M. on Monday through Saturday. Reception halls and conference centers will be raised to a fifty percent of the maximum seating capacity. If it is a reception for seated dinners only, the capacity goes up to seventy-five percent and may have ten guests per table instead of six. Auditoriums and movie theaters. I'm trying to make sure I've gotten all these right for our resolution. We are moving to the fifty percent of seating both indoors and outdoors. For our close contact and personal care services, we are, we are removing our one client per stylist and no one can wait in the waiting room because in the governor's it specifies that the number of customers inside the facility shall be limited to ensure a minimum of six feet separation between those persons. For outdoor sports complexes and multi-field complexes, we will keep in place that the Coach Howell Activity Center walking track will be open right by reservation only and limited to ten people at one time. That the Coach Howell Activity Center pickleball courts will be open by reservation only and limited to eight people at a time. And now masks will not be required at complexes except when in lines. The one thing we didn't address is what Seth asked us about is masks have to be worn on the walking track, but not in pickleball. We did not cover that. We've said in indoor facilities, which would mean that both groups had to, so let's discuss that.
I'm good without wearing the mask during the walk, as long as there's separation.
I consider that exercise.
What it is.
Okay, all right. So then should we make a motion, I guess, Pope, to change that or? I'm just adding that to the list. So when we adopt this twelfth resolution, that will be part
I think you can.
Of the record.
I think Mark was right that that really is part of exercising.
Which was an exception anyway.
Quick question also. We opened the parks, but we kept the restrooms closed. Is that correct?
The restrooms, I believe now have been opened.
No, they're not.
They're all still closed. We opened the parking garage, public restrooms, but, and I thought that we were opening the parks as well.
I mean, is there a reason we're continuing to keep those closed?
The reason that we had had them closed is just because they need to be cleaned once an hour and we just don't have staff to go once an hour. It's what the CDC recommendation is, is that they must be cleaned once an hour, so. But that's certainly, we can discuss that, but we will have to.
No, I'm good. I just forgot the once per hour.
All right. Then we have made a decision on masks, that they will continue to be required indoors in public businesses and public buildings. And that outdoor masks are not required, except when social distancing is not possible in lines such as concession stands or waiting outside bars and restaurants. So I believe that that covers all as well as a timeframe. And resolution number twelve would adopt all of those changes, correct, Pope?
Well, no, I mean, resolution twelve didn't know what y'all were gonna do. And so all of those things aren't in there. What I would recommend is that the twelfth resolution be adopted with an addendum to it, including all of these specifics you all have noted today. And what resolution twelve says that needs to be changed, because we didn't know what y'all would do with this, is what it says now is every person in the city shall wear a face covering, covering the nose and mouth while inside a business school or other building or space open to the public, which is right. That's what y'all said. Or when in an outdoor public space, when it is not possible to maintain a minimum of six feet of social distancing from another person, not in the same household. That's not exactly how y'all said it. Y'all said they will not be required outside unless social distancing cannot be maintained. It, it's almost exactly the same, but I think we can change that language in the twelfth resolution, assuming the motion includes adoption consistent with the addendum, then we'll change that language to be what the addendum says. And there was one other thing in this twelfth resolution we got wrong.
The group gatherings.
Yes, the group gatherings. Y'all did not distinguish between social distancing, distancing is or is not. You said ten people inside, twenty-five out, period. And we can drop one of those two paragraphs and go to ten, twenty.
Ten and twenty-five.
Ten, twenty-five.
Yeah, ten and twenty-five where social distancing is possible, correct?
No, didn't matter. We just set one standard is for social gatherings.
But I think the governor's order still, does it still anticipate its numbers were, were social distancing?
Let me look back.
All right, well, then, then will this say?
Group gatherings. He says, "Public and private social gatherings and recreational activities shall be limited to groups of no more than twenty people in a single indoor space and groups of no more than a hundred people in an outdoor space where individuals not in the same household or in close proximity." This limitation does not apply to, mm-mm, mm-mm.
Then, then we'll make that change as well. But those are the changes. And basically what this twelfth resolution does is drops all the references to all the old executive orders and all the old resolutions and gets closer to just being what the government is, with the exceptions that we'll add as an addendum that you all passed today.
All right. So then we will
We can declare on, on the governor's executive order on that item C, he does, in his title, says social distancing is not possible. I know we don't, that's why that, but he did.
I didn't understand what he said.
And in section C saying that social distancing states that social distance, when social distancing is not possible.
I don't see that, but I, I mean, it does say if individuals are not in the same household or in close proximity.
Right.
Look, look, my copy on the title of section C in bold.
Yes, we were reading into it.
Social distancing is not possible.
Yep.
Group gathering, social distancing.
The title of it.
So, so he says when social distancing is not possible, the limits are
Are this, but he's saying there are no limits, yes.
Right, I don't
I guess. I didn't read it that way either, Mark, until you pointed it out.
I still lack our ten and twenty-five, no matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Social distancing are not ten and twenty-five. Okay, that's what y'all were.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll need a motion to the effect of what Pope just explained, that it will be an addendum to this all that I just read through.
And if those changes is just stated.
I'll make it. Second.
All right, anybody on the phone have a comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have on our agenda to consider an executive session, but I don't have a reason for us to consider one unless anyone else does. Hearing none?
Second.
All right, a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you for being here today.